Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Town Hall Number Three. Tonight, we have our panel sitting here, and they'll be introducing each one. The first one will introduce the second one, and so on. Let me just thank the Mount Vernon Board of Education for allowing us to use Twin Oak Elementary. Also, Principal Sue Miller and staff. They've provided a great venue for us for the last three evenings. And we do have one more next Tuesday night. Will be one on rehab and recovery, so we hope many of you will come back at that time. Let me also say there will be a question and answer, as usual. All questions should be held until all of the presenters are finished. With that, let me introduce our first speaker, Mr. Chip McConville, Knox County Prosecutor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight because it shows a real interest in what's going on in our community. We've got a lot of issues in Mount Vernon and Knox County with drugs. We're going to try to provide you our perspective on them. You've got law enforcement officials here, you've got judicial officials here. There's a lot going on, the number of these cases are going up, and I'm really glad that all of you have decided to participate with us here tonight. As the screen says, I'm Chip McConville, I'm the county prosecutor. I'm responsible for the felony cases that go in front of the commonplace court. Almost all of the drug cases that you're going to see involving heroin, methamphetamine, cocaine, those sorts of things are all felonies. If you possess any amount of those drugs, you're committing a felony. And if you possess more and more of those drugs, you're committing a higher and higher degree sort of felony. What I want to do, first of all, we'll see if the AV is going to cooperate here. There we go. Just give you an idea of where things are headed. When we talked about having this series of meetings, some of the buzzwords that have come up, and some of the things that you've probably heard in the media, especially out of Columbus, is that we have an opioid epidemic. Well, that's true. Opioids are a significant problem, and the leading problem there is heroin and prescription opioids. But here in Knox County, the face and the scope of the drug issue has changed. And you can see it in the statistics if you go back to 2011 and see how it moves forward. Look at 2012, for instance, I've got heroin up at the top. There were sixty-nine felony drug cases prosecuted by the Knox County Prosecutor's Office in 2012. Fifty-five percent of them that year were heroin. That number goes down with a little blip in 2015, but right now, it's only twenty-six percent. And I have to tell you that there is a trend where our numbers are picking up. Last year, in 2016, we indicted forty-five felony drug cases. This year so far, just through the end of May, we've indicted fifty-four. So the trend is way up. The other trend that's way up is methamphetamine. If you look, in 2012, that was seventeen percent of the total. 2013, it goes up to thirty-two. 2015, it's up to forty-five. Now, it's sixty percent of the total felony cases. So people talk about the opioid epidemic, yes, that's an issue. But here in Knox County, and some of the surrounding counties, the number-one felony drug issue is methamphetamines, by far. And in fact, not long before I got here, I got a call about a potential meth lab from a detective. So if you see me bail out, you're going to know why. The numbers continue to go up, and meth, right now, is leading the pack in Knox County. So what are we doing about this? What are we trying to do from the perspective of the prosecutor's office? One of the things we're trying to do is we're trying to separate the dealers out from the users, and put them on different paths. Intervention in lieu of conviction is one of those paths for users, for first-time offenders who get tied up in something that's either a drug case or a drug-related case. Some sort of case where drugs play a role. Out of the felony cases that we've seen, and we've done statistics on this the past couple of years, fully eighty percent of the people who plead guilty to a felony in Knox County say that they are drug or alcohol-dependent. Eighty percent. So there's no doubt that drugs are driving the bus in terms of the crime here in Knox County. The intervention in lieu program allows someone to avoid a felony conviction if they have a first-time offense, and all of the consequences that go with that in terms of not being able to find employment, things of that nature. And it gets them into a treatment program, generally an outpatient-based sort of program, but it gets them on the right path and gives them a chance to get their act together before they wind up with something more severe. As the prosecutor, you know, looking at first-time people coming into the system is a very appropriate way to try to get them back into the mainstream. Personally, I believe that if there's someone who's out there dealing drugs, there ought to be a light on in the jail floor. So these are the two kinds of paths that we're working right now. We've taken a couple other measures here recently to deal with some of the drug issues, and we've used some inventive approaches. How many of you are familiar with 204 East Church Street? Let's see, hands. In this particular case, we used a civil statute, public nuisance statute, to go into a house where the tenants were allowing people to shoot up. They were dealing drugs out of there, we were able to show evidence of this before we brought any criminal proceedings, and we were able to get it shut down and boarded up by court order back in January. Good news is that the owner of this particular house has been placed in a guardianship. His son now is going to be taking over these properties, and he intends to put this house and two others owned by his father on the market. So we are going to see some turnover. It's not a quick process, it's not an easy process, but this is another arrow in the quiver to stop some of the drug trade because we literally had scores of calls about this particular house. So if you're making a call to the police and you don't see anything done immediately, that may be true. There may not be anything that happens right away, but you're building a record that's going to allow us to do things like this and shut down drug houses. Another example, if I can find one right by the ceiling. Another example, how many of you remember waking dreams, the smoke shop down on the square? It's not there anymore, it's closed, fairly quietly, but that was the result of a court order that came down in October of last year. And while I can't talk about all the details tonight, I expect that we're going to have a significant announcement related to that in the near future. But it was alleged that there was a significant amount of synthetic drugs being sold through waking dreams. And again, any kind of felony drug abuse that's taking place on premises allows the prosecuting attorney to go after it under the nuisance statutes. So this is a new kind of approach we're taking, hopefully it's going to prove effective as we go on. So with that, and being aware of the time, I'm going to hand this over to Rob Roarren, who is the City Law Director for the City of Mount Vernon.
Thank you, Chip. As Mr. Conville said, I'm Rob Roarren, I'm the elected director of law for the City of Mount Vernon. I prosecute most of the misdemeanors that occur here in Knox County. I take a little different spin on this. I want to talk about a couple of different areas where we see drugs affecting what we do in municipal court. One of the first issues is the different types of drug and drug paraphernalia. While prosecuting attorney's office prosecutes those heroin, cocaine, hard drugs like that, we prosecute the marijuana, these scheduled three, four, and five drugs. We also prosecute all of the drug paraphernalia charges, the stuff that people would use, have on them when they're using these drugs. Back in 2012, we had one hundred and forty-two of those cases. In 2016, we had two hundred and thirty-seven. When you have drugs, you have theft, and I like to call this the Walmart effect. Walmart has more cameras than just about anybody else, and they crack down hard on shoplifters. And because of that, the shoplifters, after they get caught a couple of times at Walmart, they migrate. When I first started prosecuting cases, Kroger had an asset protection officer who would come by every couple of days. They now have an asset protection officer who's there full-time, all the time. That, of course, pushes the theft down to other places. We are now seeing petty theft and shoplifting cases out of Dollar General, which was forced to add cameras so that they can prosecute people who are stealing from them, and it goes on. We all know about the issues involving operating motor vehicle under the influence of alcohol, but the statute actually reads, "operating motor vehicle under the influence of alcohol and/or a drug of abuse." And we've seen a spike in drug-driving cases. The highway patrol says that there's a twenty-five percent increase in the number of crashes involving drug drivers from 2012 to 2016. Now, thirty-three percent of all impaired driving crashes involve a drug driver. And in fact, for 2016, well, for ten and a half months of 2016, there were three thousand five hundred and seventy-four drug-driving crashes in the state of Ohio. The final way that drugs affect prosecutions is actually a good thing. It's caused my office to work more closely with the court probation staff, so that whenever we're recommending sentences for individual defendants, we're taking a harder look at what their history is and what we can or cannot do for them. And that sort of analysis is important when we get from the probation staff. Another area that we're starting to expand is code enforcement and property maintenance enforcement. And the property maintenance enforcement officer in Mount Vernon is Greg B. Miller. Back in 2016, well, actually, going back into 2013, this house in 633 North St. Duskin entered foreclosure, and the bank bought it at share of sale in May of 2014. The bank did not bother to report it, so it stayed without an owner for twenty-six months. And during that period of time without an owner, nothing happened, that is, until the squatters broke in. And when the squatters came crying, and because of that, we got together with Mr. B. Miller and the Mount Vernon Police Department, and Mr. B. Miller issued an emergency order to vacate premises because of the drugs, and the disease, and other problems. And after he put that order up, the next day, the Mount Vernon Police Department entered it, made sure there was no one in there, and we boarded it up. Like I said, back in August of 2016, the bank finally reported it right before we boarded it up, and they have now sold this property to a property developer who has cleaned up the property and has returned it to hopefully productive use and to help the neighborhood. That's sort of how drugs impacts what we do in municipal court and the law director's office. The next presenter is the Honorable Judge John Thatcher, Judge of the Mount Vernon Municipal Court. Or Judge Chisholm.
It's rough. I guess the Knox County Jail is the facility that often is the next stop after convictions either in municipal or county police court. Just to kind of go over some of the statistical information from the Knox County Jail, in 2015, fourteen-hundred-and-eighty prisoners were booked through the jail during that year. In 2016, sixteen-hundred-and-fifteen prisoners were booked through the Knox County Jail. In 2016, the total number of male inmates that we housed was eleven-hundred-and-fifty-eight, and female prisoners were four-hundred-and-fifty-three. Now, female prisoners, generally, the history of the construction, or after the construction of the jail, was a low number. In fact, the jail was designed originally for twelve female inmates. Knox County, as is most of the other counties in Ohio, has seen a surge in female inmates due to the drug situation and drug incidents. They may not all be drug charges per se, but they are linked, whether it is a theft, fraud, something of that nature, linked to the drug situation. So there was a period of time that we actually had to move the female inmates to a couple of the male dorms, put some of the males in the female dorms, just because we had so many female inmates. Instead of twelve, we were housing eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-four inmates at a time. That number is back down, and I haven't checked in the last few days, but it's been running anywhere twelve, sometimes up to eighteen female inmates. The average daily population in 2015 at the Knox County Jail was sixty-six inmates, and in 2016, it was eighty-one. And there were times last fall when we were at or over a hundred inmates. The rate of capacity at the jail is one hundred inmates, however, if you start getting up around the ninety number, then you have limited the segregation cells that we have available for behavioral or medical problems or people on suicide watch. The only really proper location that we have for people that are on suicide watch, and those people have to be checked every ten minutes, is actually our booking area. We have four holding cells in booking, and you can see if we have several people on suicide watch, we're going to have to maintain an officer in the booking area constantly, and we're taking away from other areas. So you can see as the population gets up, it really limits what we can do. The two months last year that saw the highest number of bookings were August and October, and both of those months, we booked in a hundred and fifty-nine inmates. The average stay in the Knox County Jail for a male inmate is twenty days, and a female is generally twelve days. Generally, the county average, or the different counties within the state, it averages right around eighteen days per inmate, or that's the average stay. So you can see, we try and run a lot of programming in the jail, however, that short stay, or that average short stay, kind of limits how far you can go in a program. Most of the programming, the behavioral health partnerships, the Freedom Center, and organizations like that run, are multi-step, and they span over a long period of time. So it's a lot of times impossible to get a program from start to finish while they're in the jail. However, the ability to start that program while they are that, quote, "captive audience" enables us to get things moved forward so that when they get out of jail, hopefully, they've already begun the program and they're on that steps. And if I mess anything up, Jeff Williams-West or Christina Foreman from the Freedom Center, I've already told them, hit me up or tell me that I'm saying it wrong, because these are the people that run the jail program, so I'm relying on them. And I know Christina provided some good information. I guess I'll actually back up. One of the issues that we ran into, and many jails have run into, is the problem that we have with people trying to sneak contraband into jail. And by contraband, I don't mean all the time weapons, I generally mean drugs that they're trying to sneak in to use while they're in jail. On a fresh arrest, or somebody that an officer arrests right off of the street, sometimes that happens, not near as much as someone coming in on a commitment, or someone that is planning on coming to jail, a lot of times, those people will try and sneak the drugs in. And we have instances where people have been in jail for a period of time, and there's something that occurs, we test them, and they're testing positive for drugs while they're in our jail. We've got several female inmates that have been under the influence of drugs while they've been in our jail. I know there are several jails, Richland County Jail had five females overdose in one day. There are several other counties that have had the same, Lake Clark County had a female inmate die because they overdosed while they're in jail. So it is a huge liability, not just for us and the commissioners, generally for all taxpayers who are footing this bill. So we finally, along with a lot of other counties, have installed what we call a body scanner, which is more or less an X-ray machine. This is installed, and every inmate that comes into the jail is scanned when they come in, if they leave and come back in, then they're re-scanned again. So the resolution on the scanner, if you haven't seen one before, it is pretty incredible, and you're able to really pick out anything after a little bit of training that someone might be trying to get into jail. We've had it in place since about April the twenty-seventh. We have not had any contraband put in, however, we have plenty of notices ahead of time, and I know probation is kind of briefing their clientele if they're coming in on commitments. You are going to be scanned, and if anything is located, you're going to be charged. We have signs when you come into the jail, before you enter, that you're looking at a felony convey charge if you bring items into the jail, and we also have a questionnaire before they actually get into the booking area, giving them another opportunity to surrender anything that they may be bringing in. This picture is actually from the Lincoln County Jail, and the scanner that they installed within the last few months also has been successful in there. And I know they had mentioned where their booking counter is, they've noticed where people have dropped drugs behind that counter, in front of that counter, when they're talking to an officer, because they knew they were going to be coming through. So that has worked well for us, or at least that is kind of a preventive deterrent measure that we've installed. Like I said, the Freedom Center runs programs at the jail along with Behavioral Health Partnership. Mr. Humphries, Dan Humphries, has run touchpoint at our jail in the past, and he does the Knox Works program. Adult-based education programs are run at the jail, and we have a jail ministry program. So like I say, it's tough to run an extensive program, however, we try and get people connected with services while they're in the jail. In fact, Department of Job and Family Services, we're also coordinating with them to get people signed up either for benefits or programs prior to release from the jail, because we realize, a lot of times, when somebody leaves the jail, they're going back to an environment that may not be that conducive to them staying on the path where they're going. So the more things we can get in place ahead of time, the better and the more benefit it is to the public, to us, and to that person. As you can see, they've seen over, they saw over two hundred inmates last year, and there are several different methods that they use to get referrals, either from the courts or friends or family members. And the numbers at the bottom, in 2016, fifty-two percent of the inmates referred, engaged with treatment. It may not seem like a high number, but if you talk to someone from the Freedom Center or people involved, that is quite a bit higher than what they were used to before. So I think my next person is Judge Thatcher.
I put the slideshow together, so I should have known what the order was. In the legal court, we only put people in jail, not prison, so we deal with misdemeanors, and generally, we run about eleven-hundred, four-hundred misdemeanor cases a year. So far this year, five-hundred-and-forty-six, lots of traffic, that's pretty typical, forty-five thousand traffic cases a year. Why is that significant? Because a lot of times, traffic stops result in drug cases. Over two hundred OBI operated vehicle under influence cases last year. So we see a pretty high-volume number of people, so I see just about everybody accounted. About three years ago, when I got on the bench, after a few months, I started noticing, because I'm getting older, I read the vituaries first, and I read papers instead of comics now, I started recognizing a lot of names for some reason, and kind of freaked out. It's, it was people overdosing that I'd seen in court. One lady was in court on Thursday, and she was dead by the weekend, and I read her vituary. So I go to my chief probation officer, Mayor Dave, and I go, "Dave, what the heck's going on? People are overdosing, what are we going to do about it?" Well, Dave had been to a conference, and a judge from Hocking County, who started a drug port down there using Vivitrol, which is a drug that blocks the effects of opiates, and that was just part of this drug port, allowed us to come down, so we went down to look.
scanner, which is more or less an X-ray machine. This is installed, and every inmate that comes into the jail is scanned when they come in. If they leave and come back in, then they're re-scanned again. So, the resolution on the scanner, if you haven't seen one before, it is pretty incredible, and you're able to really pick out anything after a little bit of training that someone might be trying to get into jail. We've had it in place since about April the twenty-seventh. We have not had any contraband put in, however, we have plenty of notices ahead of time, and I know probation is kind of briefing their clientele, if they're coming in on commitments, you are gonna be scanned, and if anything is located, you're gonna be charged. We have signs when you come into the jail, before you enter, that you're looking at felony convey charge if you bring items into the jail. And we also have a questionnaire before they actually get into the booking area, giving them another opportunity to surrender anything that they may be bringing in. This picture is actually from the Lincoln County Jail, and the scanner that they installed within the last few months also has been successful there. And I know they had mentioned where their booking counter is, they've noticed where people have dropped drugs behind that counter, in front of that counter, when they've talked to an officer, because they knew they were gonna be coming through. So, that has worked well for us, or at least that is kind of a preventative deterrent measure that we've installed. Like I said, the Freedom Center runs programs at the jail, along with Behavioral Health Partnership. Mr. Humphries, Dan Humphries, has run Touchpoint at our jail in the past, and he does the Knox Works Program. Adult-based education programs are run at the jail, and we have a jail ministry program. So, like I say, it's tough to run an extensive program, however, we try and get people connected with services while they're in the jail. In fact, Department of Job and Family Services, we're also coordinating with them to get people signed up either for benefits or programs prior to release from the jail, because we realize, a lot of times when somebody leaves the jail, they're going back to an environment that may not be that conducive to them staying on the path where they're going. So, the more things we can get in place ahead of time, the better and the more benefit it is to the public, to us, and to that person. As you can see, they've seen over, they saw over two hundred inmates last year, and there are several different methods that they use to get referrals, either from the courts or friends or family members. And the numbers at the bottom, in 2016, fifty-two percent of the inmates referred, engaged with treatment. It may not seem like a high number, but if you talk to someone from the Freedom Center or people involved, that is quite a bit higher than what they were used to before. So, I think my next person is Judge Thatcher.
I put the slideshare together, so I should've known what the order was. In the prison ward, we only put people in jail, not prison, so we deal with misdemeanors. And generally, we run about eleven-hundred, four-hundred misdemeanor cases a year. So far this year, five-hundred forty-six. Lots of traffic, that's pretty typical, forty-five thousand traffic cases a year. Why is that significant? Because a lot of times, traffic stops result in drug cases. Over two-hundred OBI, operated the vehicle in the influence cases last year. So, we see a pretty high-volume number of people. So, I see just about everybody accounted. About three years ago, when I got on the bench, after a few months, I started noticing, because I'm getting older, I read the vitraries first, and I read papers instead of comics now, I started recognizing a lot of names for some reason, and kind of freaked out. It's, uh, it was people overdosing that I'd seen in court. One lady was in court on Thursday, and she was dead by the weekend, and I read her vitriary. So, I go to my chief probation officer, Mayor Dave, and I go, "Dave, what the heck's going on? People are overdosing, what are we gonna do about it?" Well, David had been to a conference, and a judge from Hocking County, who started a drug port down there using Vivitrol, which is a drug that blocks the effects of opiates, and that was just part of this drug port, allowed us to come down. So, we went down to Logan, all the probation officers, myself. We watched how they ran drug port, and about a year ago, we finally got certified, and this is what our drug port is called. It's called mandated education and referral to treatment. And we came up with this fancy logo. If you don't know, purple is the color of recovery. So, the missing puzzle piece in the heart shape up there is purple, which represents recovery. So, it's the goal of Merritt Court to put the recovery back into the person's life, to give them their life back. I don't know if you can see it, but the mission statement underneath the logo tells you what our Merritt Court is all about. You know, we don't skip over making people be accountable for what they did, that got them into trouble in the first place. We make them be accountable, they do serve jail time, they put on probation, but what we try to do is give them the chance to become a contributing member of the community. We want them to stop breaking the law, so that they can cut down our costs at the jail, and in law enforcement, and in courts, and prosecutors' offices, and defendants' offices, and everywhere else. So, we started Merritt Court a few years ago. And I got probably thinking, "What's the difference between regular court and drug court?" Well, we had a weekly drug court, we call it Merritt Court session yesterday, and we had a pretty good conversation about it. One of our participants just celebrated one year, a little over a year of being clean. And a year ago, I would admit she would not have made it. But we had a discussion about the difference. If a person is put on probation, in the traditional way of dealing with probation, it's all about what can we catch them doing, using drugs, breaking the law, doing things they're not supposed to do, and then give them more jail time. So, it becomes this adversarial situation where probation is trying to get away with things, and they don't trust us, and frankly, we don't trust them. The difference with Merritt Court is, there is that trust. They trust us to do the things for them that they need to get well, so they stop breaking the law, stop going to jail, get employed, get the help that they need. They've already been recognized with Jeff Williams-West and the Freedom Center, Christina, and there's other people here tonight, they're all part of our drug court treatment team. I don't know anything about alcohol or drug use counseling, or how to deal with that, I rely on them to do that. So, when you're in drug court, you're in, for at least a year and a half, up to two years, you go through phases, you have to maintain sobriety, or be clean from drugs, obviously, to be able to graduate through the phases. These people also are the most intensive supervised people there are on probation. They're going to see the probation officer almost every day, they're going to the Freedom Center all the time, they're going to their BHP appointments, they're coming to court for, uh, thank you for change classes, to help them realize how they need to change the way they think they stay on the program. And it's very hard work, really. So, that's one of the reasons we call it Merritt Court, because you have to earn the right, you have to merit the right to be in Merritt Court, and not be kicked out and put back in regular probation. You can read this, but basically what this says is, drug court's been around for about twenty-five years, they've been studied very intensively, and it's been shown, because of this extra effort committed to people, that they're less likely to reoffend if they successfully complete a drug court. And that's our goal. We save money, because we put more time into people that are behind those risks to reoffend. We don't cherry pick the first-time shoplifter, or somebody that we know is not gonna reoffend. We pick the people we know, because they have long criminal records and for other reasons, that they aren't gonna break the law, because that's what they do. We're gonna try to put more effort into them to get them to stop. And because we're seeing them so much, and I think one of the reasons, because they see need every week, they want to comply. It may sound strange, I still put them in jail when they don't, but they really want to succeed and graduate, and we make sure we make a big deal about graduations whenever this happens, so that they feel proud of themselves. And so far, we've had about twenty-eight people go through our Merritt Court program. It's still a year old, so we haven't had anybody graduate yet, but they're getting close. Drug court is not the answer for the drug abuse problem. It's part of the answer, it's part of the solution, but it's one among many things that we can try, try to make a dent in the drug abuse problem that results in crime that impacts your courts. So, with that, we're gonna introduce Chief probation Officer Dave Priest. He's gonna tell you a little bit about how, and he's got our Merritt Court Coordinator, Joel Carter, with him. He's gonna tell you a little bit about how other programming and probation partners affect my drug abuse.
Well, unlike these guys, I actually brought my staff, they push my buttons during the weeks, and I'm gonna push your buttons right now. Like Judge says, my name's Dave Priest, I'm the Chief probation officer from Mount Auburn Municipal Court. I think the reason we wanted to show this slide, not just to show the face of the name, but I'm gonna throw some stats out there, which are at the bottom of this. And some of the things I'm gonna talk about tonight, obviously, drugs are a huge, huge piece of what we do, and so is the crime trends. That number there at the bottom, our goals, and I wanna tell them what our goals are, so when you look at these stats I'm gonna show tonight, I want you to understand that what we do is a balancing act. And what that means is, is we wanna serve, protect the community. That's the number-one thing that we do. And that means enforcing the conditions of supervision, but at the same token, we also have been trying to identify where that offender is at their level of supervision. We utilize, which the other court does as well, and all the courts around Ohio, Ohio Risk Assessment Force. We want to identify that moderate, it's a moderate high-risk offender, because that's where we wanna pump our resources in. Studies show that if we keep pumping resources into these first-time offenders, and even some of these individuals who have low-grade cases, such as from trespassing and things like that, who actually do them a disservice, we're probably gonna make them worse. So, that's one of the things that we do as far as protecting the community. Number two is, we wanna reduce recidivism. This is where the balancing act comes in. Some of the things I'm gonna show you tonight, we try to be very good stewards of the community's money, and we are trying to develop and utilize several evidence-based programs in our community. And obviously, we wanna implement the orders of the court. So, obviously, we deal with post-conviction convictions, and the judge is gonna order an individual certain things that he wants to see that individual do. And part of that is, once we get that individual on supervision, we wanna make sure that we're providing relevant information back to the court, and we also wanna make sure that we're working with our local law enforcement, APA, the Common Pleas Court, even juvenile court, to make sure that we're sharing information back and forth. That's one thing that we've been, uh, we took a huge step in the last year, year and a half, that we need to do a better job of that. So, we definitely like to share that information. Matter of fact, shortly after, as Chip indicated, I think that we're gonna be called out on a couple home visits tonight. So, with that, with those goals, the reason I wanted to show this slide, we currently have one thousand seven hundred, one thousand three hundred and seventy-four active cases with the Municipal Court. There's four of us, including our receptionist, Cheryl, and that is a lot. Now, when I first got there, we had over twenty-five hundred active cases, and I don't think we were doing an effective job. So, we've dropped that, just about a thousand extra cases this year, and we're concentrating on those high-risk, moderate-risk offenders. So, to give you an idea of what that totals, low-risk offenders, we had about, first of all, let me back up. We had about five hundred new intakes this past year. Out of those new intakes out of court, we had three hundred and twenty-six that were low-risk offenders. Those moderate, that I told you that we wanna pump the resources in, were just about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five. And then we had those high-risk offenders. These are the guys who had multiple felonies, and then they finally caught a misdemeanor charge. And we only had nineteen in those individuals. So, that's why we're trying to pump our resources into those moderate-risk offenders. So, to give you an idea of what those resources are, one that's not up there, and I wanna make sure that I included this, is our jail. Our jail, we actually use it as a sanction when it comes to supervision. We're never gonna get away from an individual having to do those hundred and eighty days or that ninety days, but we ultimately wanna use the jail as a sanction as much as we can, because at the end of the day, no matter how much time an individual does, they will return to the community. So, we need to educate ourselves, we need to rehabilitate the offender, educate the offender, but we also need to educate the community, and that's obviously what we're trying to do tonight. I-SAMS, that's our call-in system automated. I include that, we did eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight individual test results last year. Out of those test results, seven hundred and seventy-two positive screens. At the number, just at the end there, thirty-nine percent of them were THC-oriented, twelve percent methamphetamine, and on down the line. Almost all the other categories were twelve-point-five, twelve-point-two, but out of those, almost fifty percent of those cases had multiple drug screens out of one test. So, the individual tested for THC, the problem is, he also tested for methamphetamine, and where he tested positive for opiate or heroin. So, as the prosecutor's office indicated earlier, we're seeing the same thing. That's gonna be on the rise right now, and we've already, with the tests we've done so far this year, I think that number's already at twenty percent. I think it's about a three-to-one ratio right now would be developed, but it's worth analyzing. Behavioral health, we started thinking for a change group. So, we're taking the moderate-risk, high-risk offenders, and we're doing pocket behavioral programming, criminal thinking programs. We're doing those in-house, and we have great partnerships with BHP, also Freedom Center. We were fortunate to be able to implement programming with Freedom Center. We're trying to reach that individual when they're setting in jail, so when they come out of jail, we can do a soft handoff to the drug treatment programs, mental health treatment programs. And as Judge indicated earlier, which I don't believe is up there, is also our Vivitrol, like the walk-in clinic. There's quite a few times that we'll get an individual out of jail just a little bit early, so we can get that person their first injection to get them on the road for their drug. Alcohol monitoring, our scram units, been very effective on two levels. I know it talks about alcohol, but if I put some, an individual on a scram unit, which is gonna monitor their alcohol use, that gives me enough time and more time to deal with that drug offender. This has been an effective tool for us, and after we started using that, we've actually had, believe it or not, we've only had one individual who has failed this currently. Three thousand eight hundred and twenty-one days of sobriety, so I think it's quite a number. And we've also used it for overcrowding the jail. Sometimes the sheriff's office will call and say that they have no room for females, or we need to bunk room, we have some felony cases coming up. We utilize this technology so we can get that individual out of jail. Currently, we have, was it three? Three or four. We have three on DPS right now, and that's another, that's something we just started embracing here recently. Holders, give you an idea of what the judge showed, if you can read those slides. We're trying to look at that twenty percent markers, which is a tool that we use to hold an individual in jail, so we can figure out whether we wanted to sanction that individual, and or we can look at treatment programming. Twenty percent of those cases that the sheriff indicated, that sixteen-hundred, twenty percent of those were ours, just probation. And that's a number we wanna make sure that we're monitoring, because again, we wanna make sure that that person is not only set up with those services while they're in the jail, but when they hit the screen, we wanna make sure that we're not sending them back. That's our ultimate goal. Merritt Court, Judge already discussed. Joel is our drug court coordinator. We were able to add him to the staff, but he is monitoring our drug court constituents. He also carries a standard case load, again, there's four of us. Do you have about three hundred? Three hundred people. We're trying to work on that number. We need more people, and we're working on that. So, the last one here, supervised community service hours. We take a lot of pride in this, because this gives us what we call a pro-social activity. I know it looks, not only the individual, the offender gets an opportunity to give back to their community, but of those four probation officers, three of them are also licensed social workers. So, we get that opportunity to supervise community service, and we get that opportunity to pocket that individual while we're out doing, doing different projects. And you'd be surprised at the things that we talk about, so. This is just a picture we recently, about two weeks ago. We had a lot of clients, the Arch Avenue or the Arch Park. That slide really doesn't do it justice, but that overflowed a forty-yard dumpster of trash, fifteen of us, and that was a fantastic project. Those are the kind of projects that we're trying to do for this community. It was a great opportunity, because you'd be surprised how many of them that come through our department are also been homeless at one time. These were the homeless camps that went that way, and you can imagine the dialogue that came out of that, when you have an individual that's cleaning up the trash, who indicates that he used to stay down there. So, that's how powerful that is, and it's a great way to give back to our community. So, not to hog all the time here, but all the partnerships are huge. Our Department of Corrections, we were able to secure a one thousand nine hundred, one hundred and nineteen thousand dollar grant two years ago. We're up for renewal, and like I said, we're open to keep adding to that. It allows us to continue those partnerships and offer programming, such as the Freedom Center, BHP, D4C. We also have a hands-down program for domestic violence awareness. Reboundation, been fantastic. We've been using some of this money for incentive money for our Merritt Court, and some of the projects that we've had that we wanna do through the court. That also includes the, on below, the Alternative Youth Project, because Joel was able to give his two thousand dollars to the Altern, to actually fund the Alternative Youth Project. We've seen a lot of those individuals, eighteen to twenty-one, that are coming out, and they're already addicted to drugs. This will allow us to get them into safe housing. We've actually, we've actually got one individual a state ID, so he thinks he's GD. So, that money allows us to do those programs. Vending Machine, that was a program that, and a gratitude grant. Those were actually two programs that we received recently through the Elks last year. Received two thousand dollars, Vending Machine was donated through the hard work of Kathy Hillier, if you've ever been down to Title Office, her crew, they did a fantastic job. She was able to get us a vending machine. It doesn't seem like much, but we've raised about nine hundred and thirty-five dollars in proceeds, and how that goes to drug awareness and activity. So, if we have an individual calls and says they need something to help them with recovery, this is where we use that money. So, then last but not least, we have the Square Words Program, the gratitude grant, again, a two thousand dollar grant, that we were able to do that. And the bottom, which I'm very proud of, and I can't wait to get started, I've got a meeting coming up. Judge's not aware of this, but we just secured that grant. That's gonna be the Chris up here, Chris Pitt Program, Memorial Scholarship Program. Does not seem like a lot, but you tell an individual they can learn a little more to drugs, you need to put something in their hand that's an alternative. And this is an alternative as they're going through recovery, and we wanna give them a program with those individuals, and this is gonna allow us to send them through a wellness program. We're gonna pay for the scholarships and get them on the, continue on the road of recovery. So, very excited, we just actually got the approval late last night. So, follow-up here, plain, hit the plain site program often through PESAP. We're gonna be offering that through the Elks program. The Elks has actually opened up a building down there, they're very excited to host us, so we'd like to, if you guys are house for First Fridays, please stop in, we're going to do the hit the plain site. I believe I actually have some information over there for PESAP program, but we'd love to see you.
Thank you very much. I deal with both juveniles and adults, so I have a bit of a different perspective. The juveniles I deal with, they commit both misdemeanors and felonies, so we deal with them hopefully appropriately, and deal with them in court with their cases in that respect. We also deal with adults in the, in the abusive black dependency cases with, uh... We also deal with adults in the, in the abuse and neglect dependency cases with taking away, dealing with, with mothers and fathers when they have children who, they have issues with their families, and we have to bring them into court through Children Services to the complaint, and we deal with them with their, when we have, again, issues with just parenting issues, and usually it involves drugs, alcohol, cleanliness, and things of that nature. So again, I, I deal with both juveniles and adults. I do have a juvenile drug court program. Magistrate Jake Nixon does run that. It began in 2000, so it's been going on for quite some time now. It's very intensive. It's our most intensive program, although we do now have a mental health court program that we, we started as well. We do work with the Drug and Alcohol Freedom Center. It's similar to Judge Thatcher's Merrick Court program, where we do offer rewards and consequences for juveniles for issues with drugs and alcohol. I believe right now we have around nine or 10 juveniles in that drug court program, and we see juveniles with issues anywhere from marijuana on up, and we deal with them, and again, it's, it's very intensive. Meet with them every week, they have a probation officer, and they go through phases that I'm going to discuss. Not only do we deal with the juveniles, we also hold parents accountable. It's very important to do that, because if you don't have the parents involved, parents are an integral part of the, the family system, and obviously the, the children are with their parents, or we hope so, or, or someone. So we have to have accountability for both the juvenile and the parents. And so each week, when they, we bring them into drug court, we make sure that, you know, we're discussing issues with them. We have things such as the Parent Project, which is a 16-week educational project for parents to help them learn how to parent better, because obviously there's an issue that brings the juveniles in before the court system. These are the phases of drug court. There are four phases in drug court, and it starts out very intensive, where you see the magistrate every week, and, you know, several times you may have to check in with your probation officer, very much focused on accountability, responsibility, that kind of thing. As the phases go on, that, that lessens. And then, like I said, it goes on, and we're working in conjunction with the Drug and Alcohol Freedom Center. Also regarding the adult system and the abuse and neglect dependency cases I hear, and this is more when we're talking about child abuse and working with Children Services and these complaints and bringing these, these parents in. My caseload with this abuse and neglect dependency docket has risen substantially from 2015, when I took office, to 2016, because these parents have, we've seen a rise in parents that are on drugs, that say, "I don't want to parent my children anymore." So Children Services has no option but to file complaints, and, and I have to make a decision what to do with these children, and it's, we see them, issues with methamphetamines, heroin, those are the big ones, and, and those issues. And oftentimes, there are no other family members that we can give them to, and we're dealing with cases that Judge Wetzel has, that Chip Conville is dealing with. So we're all connected. Judge Thatcher, they're all, they have cases in other courts. So when I have these cases in my court, they may have cases in Judge Thatcher's court, or I may have them on video feed out of the jail, or they may be in prison, or wherever. So they have, they have lots of legal issues that they are dealing with, and sometimes the least of their concern is their children. However, they may have one, two, three, four kids that I have to deal with, and that you all have to deal with, because where are those children going? They have to be going somewhere. A family member is the first place we try to place them with. If we don't have a family member, they have to go to a foster family. However, we're, Knox County, as of a few months ago, had two and a half foster homes in the whole county. We're trying to raise that number, but we're still short. And the number of cases that I have are rising, rising, rising. Again, it's parents' heroin addiction. I mean, we're not talking, I mean, heroin, marijuana, that's almost, I mean, sad to say from my perspective, that's not even really, to me, I'm talking heroin, meth. I mean, you know, when I don't, when I have parents that have no running water, they haven't, they don't know where their children are, they, I mean, it, we're, these are big, serious issues. The parents are going to prison for six years. These are serious issues. So these are, this is affecting the community, so I'm very happy to see you all here tonight, and, and your interest in what's going on, because, again, not only is it affecting, it's affecting children in multiple, multiple facets, so. With that, Judge Wetzel.
Thank you very much for being here. I'm Judge Richard Wetzel of the Common Police Court in Knox County. I started on the Common Police Court in January of this year, and I want to thank the committee for organizing this and all the work went into it. I also had a conversation with Terry Walter on my way in for this evening, and Terry, Terry and I were talking about the fact that all of you are here, and we've had meetings prior to this, where members of the community are coming together, members of the, of the committee have worked hard to organize this, and it is by working together and supporting the organizations and the agencies, and the law enforcement, and our courts, and our foster parents, and Touchpoint, and the Escape Zone, and Freedom Center, and BHP, and supporting all of the organizations and agencies in the county that are providing all of these much needed services to what I call the at-risk population. And the at-risk population knows no economic level, okay? It's not just isolated in certain sectors of the community. We have families in our community that have been touched, hurt, and injured very deeply by the drug epidemic that all of the counties in our state and across the nation are suffering. And some of those families are represented in this room. So it's because we are all intent on coming together and working on these issues, it's going to take a lot of work. It took us longer than a generation to get where we are today. I think we have to acknowledge that it may take us longer than a generation to get out of this, but we have to start today, and we have to do the things that the members of the county have been talking about, that we're working on. I want to introduce my staff. I'm here with our Chief Probation Officer, Lisa Lyons, who's going to speak in a moment, and also another one of our probation officers, Adam Taylor is here. Adam's going to talk for a minute. Our priorities, of course, in, in the court, in the Common Police Court, protection of public safety is a top priority. Reduce repeat offenses, reduce recidivits, as we call it, reduce repeat offenders, and also use all of the available alternatives that we have. As I referred to earlier, the other agencies and organizations that we have in our county and outside the county that provide services to our at-risk population, that's what we have to do. Before starting on the bench in January, I spent a good part of last year going around the state, visiting other organizations and agencies around the state, find out what are, what are other parts of the state doing, what are other counties doing, what are other common police courts doing, what are other municipal courts doing? What happens when you sentence somebody and they go to, go to prison? What, where do they go? You know, how do you know where they're going? What kind of programs do they get? What happens, what is a community-based correctional facility? I heard this term, CDCF. So what is the BOA in Mansfield? So I started by going down to the Department of Rehabilitation and Correction, I met with a couple of the directors there, and asked them these questions, and I spent about three hours with me, and they gave me a list of names of people around the state that I needed to go see and get educated about what are all the programs that are being offered out there. So I went over to the West Central Community-Based Correctional Facility in Marionsville. It's a very well-run program. It's, it's one of the top programs in the state, and I was inside the facility, and I met with the director and some of his staff, and they talked, they told me and educated me about the programs that they offer. And I took a tour of the facility, I was in there with the inmates, and, and in addition to that, I attended a class, a training session in November, a two-day training session for probation officers. Find out what is it that probation officers do, what, what are the best practices in probation departments around the state? And they, this class was a two-day class, and I was, believe it or not, I was the only judge there, and they said they've never had a judge come to any of these programs before, and I understand that, because that's what probation officers are supposed to do. But I wanted to learn what do the probation departments do, and what, what is the current best practice in probation departments? So that was a two-day program. It was a two-day program on what they call core corrections practices. And Dave Priest referred to this a little bit earlier, core corrections practices in the corrections industry, and that's in the prisons, in the jails, in the probation departments. This is focused on what we call cognitive behavioral therapy. And what we're trying to do is to retrain people who have addiction problems and other issues, how to change their thinking. Dave Priest referred to a program that's very popular, that we, our, our probation officer, Josh Guttridge, is trained in, it's called T4C. It means Thinking For A Change. It's cognitive behavioral therapy. And I kept hearing these terms over and over again, and so it was important to learn what these terms mean, and you have heard some of these terms tonight, so I'm going to encourage you to be aware in the future, as you hear these terms mentioned or read about them, to learn and understand, this is serious stuff. It's not just sitting down with a counselor. That's a big part of, counseling is a big part. But we're trying to change how people think, and what causes them to make behavioral changes, or behavioral decisions. Another thing that we're doing is we're expanding our probation department. We're going to add additional probation officers, because as the experience of the municipal court has just been described to you, your caseloads are going up, you only have so many people. We need to be able to spend more time with our probationers, and that means you meet more people, because your number of probationers is increasing. I already referred to the other organizations and agencies, some of them, Touchpoint, Knox Works, Freedom Center, BHP. Another thing that we're doing is, is kickstarting the community corrections planning board. That's a, a board that is set up by statute, and it involves a lot of people that are represented in government and in the public, in helping us as the courts, municipal court, and common police court, and juvenile court, and the probation departments of each of those, to collaborate on how do we address the needs of our at-risk population. So we're, we're doing that, you'll be hearing more about that in the future. We met today, again, and Dave Priest and Lisa and I spent quite a bit of time together talking about collaboration among the courts and what we can do. I'm going to skip the statistics if you want. Chip mentioned intervention in lieu of conviction. I'm going to breeze past this real fast, because Chip already talked you about it. But what I wanted to tell you about intervention in lieu of conviction, it is an alternative. And what I'm here to tell you about is the alternatives to incarceration. Protecting the public safety is our top priority. There's always incarceration, if it's necessary to protect the public safety. And in some cases, you can't avoid it. You have to sensibly to jail or to prison. You don't have any other alternative. You've tried the other alternatives, okay? So that, that's always an alternative. One of the, we're talking tonight here about the alternatives to incarceration, and what can we do? Intervention in lieu of conviction is one of those. Unfortunately, intervention in lieu of conviction is a statute that was written by legislators, and when lawmakers write laws, they add some restrictions, and there are restrictions on intervention in lieu of conviction. So, for example, you can't have a prior felony conviction for an offense of violence, or a conviction for a non-violent felony, but, and then prosecutor and, and we're back in a second. You cannot have a prior felony conviction for an offense of violence. But if you have a prior non-violent felony conviction, and the prosecutor thinks that you might be a good candidate for intervention in lieu of conviction, you have passed the first hurdle, okay? There are other hurdles that you'll see up there. You cannot be charged with a first degree felony, or a second degree felony, or a third degree felony. It can't, it can't be charged with aggravated vehicular homicide, or aggravated particular assault. You can't be charged with corrupting, trafficking, manufacturing of drugs, or ad volatile steroids, or an F1, F2, or F3 possession, okay? We've already eliminated a whole bunch of cases that are in the common police court, okay? The point I'm making is that intervention in lieu of conviction, we use it whenever we can, but there are restrictions. If your victim is over age 65, you're not eligible for intervention in lieu of conviction. If your victim is less than 13 years of age, you're not eligible for intervention in lieu of conviction. If your victim is disabled, you're not eligible. So however, if you are eligible, you get into a treatment program. If you're successful in the treatment program, the case gets dismissed. So that's intervention in lieu of conviction in a nutshell, in a big nutshell. Another alternative is community control. I, you've heard this referred to as probation, and that's what it is. Probation department handles the community control. Community control is, we, we do drug and alcohol assessment, mental health assessment, try to get a treatment if, if it's possible. We can impose a curfew. If the offense occurred at 3:00 in the morning, that person is going to get a curfew. And I'm going to say it's between 10:00 PM or 5:00 AM, depending on work requirements, but, you know, if they're out in the middle of the night, they need to be at home, get a good night's sleep, so they can be successful in their treatment programs, and we'll give them a curfew. Some violations of the community control may result in jail time or prison time. We tell them that when we put them on community control. If you violate, you may wind up in jail, you may go into prison. So those are a couple of the alternatives. I'm going to introduce Lisa now. Lisa's going to tell you a little bit about our pre-trial services program, which is something that we just started. And this is Lisa Lyons, our Chief Probation Officer. Lisa's also a- Lisa's also an auxiliary police officer in Danville. And when Lisa's finished, I'm going to ask Adam to speak for a minute, and Adam has a guest with him, he's going to give you just a minute to end on a success story.
Thank you. One of the programs that we have started recently is called the Pre-Trial Release Program. And that program is designed to protect, of course, protect citizens and community of Knox County, but also to free up jail space for more violent felony offenders or more violent offenders. With the pre-trial release, Judge Wetzel may impose a bond and set a bond amount, and as part of that bond, if it's posted or if it's a recognance bond, part of the requirements might be that that person has strict reporting requirements, has to begin the process of the drug and alcohol assessment, may have a curfew. Most of the time, we put restrictions on our offenders as far as who they associate We impose the necessary conditions. If they violate their conditions, then they will go back to jail and be held in lieu of posting perhaps a larger bond, or wait until the case comes to before Judge Wetzel. Also, we talked about generations, and as for me, I never thought I would stand up here and say something like this, but I started with juvenile probation in 1991. And fortunately, or unfortunately, I don't know, but I'm on the third generation of offenders now. I've seen many offenders come through our court that I've had to deal with as juveniles. And it's sad, but it's true. It is a generational problem, and it needs to be addressed because it's not going to get any better. As far as other programs that we have, they mentioned intervention in lieu. I supervise people on intervention in lieu of conviction. Once again, it's a form of probation. They have strict requirements. A lot of people don't know the difference between a probation officer and a parole officer. Parole deals with people that have been incarcerated in the state penal system. Probation could be a community control or what is called a post-release control, and they have community control rules that they have to follow, and a parole officer may supervise that person. But as far as our office, my office, Adult Court Services Office, we supervise people on community control. So there is a big difference between that. We have two state parole officers that work within our county, and they supervise people that have been in prison and are out on parole, most generally. Sometimes, we review every case, and a lot of times, we will, you know, coordinate not only with the parole, but the probation, our probation staff, as to who may be appropriately appropriate to supervise a certain offender. I think with that, I will give it to Adam.
This is Adam Taylor, and Adam Taylor is one of our probation officers. Adam has a guest with him tonight, and Adam wants to tell you a little bit about him. Introduce him.
I want to do this a little differently because I'm used to handling microphones. So my name is Adam Taylor. I work with the Knox County Adult Court Services Department by probation services through the Common Police Court. Our goal is no different than any other probation office. We strive to reduce offender recidivism through changing behavior. Some people might think that changing behavior is a big feat, and it is. This business is not all about victories. I am lucky to have two veteran officers that represent almost five decades of combined experience, so I have a lot of good on-the-job guidance. But we try our best to place these people in programs that are appropriate. We identify the needs of the offenders, and we try to deploy for them interventions that we think will help them. Getting back to the changing, you know, it's easy in this business to tell yourself, so-and-so could never change. They're never going to change because they might have a lengthy criminal history. Maybe they've been in and out of the criminal justice system since they were a juvenile, and it might look hopeless on the outside. One beauty that we have in this business, we do have reminders on occasion that change is possible. And I came face-to-face with an encounter that some might have said at one time that this individual, you know, he may never change. I was assigned to do a pre-sentence investigation on a man by the name of Anthony Serio, and Mr. Serio had been in and out of the criminal justice system for a number of years. He has battled addiction since he was about age 12, if I remember correctly from our initial talks about his substance abuse, and he has not had clean spells in his life longer than terms in county jails. And I'm pleased to say that today Tony Serio is here, and he's going to tell you firsthand what it's like to have over nine months clean and sober, and he is working very hard. He's also joined by his older brother, John Serio, who is in the Merrick Court at the Mount Vernon Municipal Court, and the two brothers came out tonight. How do you tell them about your life-changing experience and what it's like living clean and sober?
Let's see. I've been an addict for a long time. In prison, jail, jail. Been on the streets for a long time, too. I never thought I'd get to this point, but over this last year, I was indicted on three felony charges, two possessions for burglary, and I had to sit in the county jail for six months, thinking about that. I had an aha moment that made me want to change my life when I had to watch my son walk through the door. It's at that time, I knew I had to make a decision. And for that, just, I know now, I don't have to live that way today, and I didn't have to put a needle in my arms when I got up.
I'm John Serio, Merrick Court participant, bachelor. I'm in eighth grade, I love this program, the president's back there, big, big part of you. It's great, man. Big win, it's the most fantastic thing in the life, given the fact I'm a kid. I got two jobs, I work hard, I give back, and I give back to you guys what I've done and gave, you know, what I've done.
Tricia Concolier is with us tonight, and he'll be the emcee for questions. Mr. Concolier?
If you have a question, please ask it right here. Hand will come around to you with a right hand. We have a few minutes, but we also want to make sure that the questions tonight, as with all the other nights, are relevant to the panel that we have here today, and the doctors that are coming.
Yes, I saw all the cases before probation officers. Under 1100 at one point, 1100. How does four probation officers handle that kind of load? How can you possibly help each and every one to get to the goal?
That's why we have the system in place, as far as identifying and monitoring. We have 1100 people on supervision, 590 of them on court. We've moved through that phase. I'll try and, the idea is, we're trying to move through those phases so we can get to those people that are of priority. It is balancing that. And I don't have a great answer for you. Like I said, we're trying to reduce the caseloads right now, trying to give the individuals the opportunity, who have already gone through the phases of the programs, met the requirements of court, from financial to terms, treatment, we're trying to give them the opportunity to be terminated early, again, so we can move on to the next supervision. It is balancing that right now. That'd be great. Write a check, that's one team at least. But yes, I mean, that's the problem. That's why we tried to show tonight the importance of trying these grants. It's, we never had a grant. I don't know that we, just before had a grant, and we were fortunate to receive a $96,000 grant. We probably wouldn't have Officer Carter here, his experience, if he breaks the table if we didn't have that grant. That's why we're looking for other grants as well.
I mentioned earlier that I've gone over to the West Central CDCF in Marysville, and one of the things we talked about was, how do we get more staff, and how do we pay for that? Who is it that you, what kind of training? Well, the Marysville Community-Based Correctional Facility is in a district that is outside our district. Knox County's district is Knox County, Licking County, Kachan County, Skim County. We don't have the CDCF. They closed it seven years ago, the ODRC closed it. So, but we can collaborate with the West Central CDCF, the Community-Based Correctional Facility in Marysville, and they have offered to help us, to help place a new probation officer in our common police court. So, you know, the thing that you're seeing here is the creativity in the municipal court, drug court program, and the creative thinking that is happening in the rest of the community by other agencies and our court as well, to find alternative ways and additional ways and resources so that we don't have to rely solely on the taxpayers. Because the only way I'm going to use this to protect the person, but it still has to be effective. So we are working on it. We'll see more staff back. The county commissioners just purchased a building that will house our probation office and classroom space, and we adult parole officers, so that we are able to expand our staff and offer more services to our probationers. And that would not be possible if it weren't for the thinking of our county commissioners, and their willingness to listen to us when we say we need something, and they're willing to help us. Do you have a question?
Just a quick word. You have the prison sentencing, you go to a rehab center, and if they stay clean for those years, that's a great thing.
So, you have a question, Mike?
Yes, I would like to thank Lisa Lyons. I know she's a state police officer, and she also is on the government. I really want to thank you. Can you tell me the name of the adult parole officers?
Yeah, the adult parole officers are Officer William Pear and Officer Irene Richardson. And back to the question that you had about the case size, the parole officers both have over 100 people on parole or post-release control that they supervise between the two of them. My caseload right now is at 73, which is very difficult to supervise those people. That's why they are divided up into seriousness of their offense and where they are in their probationary period. I believe Adam has 30.
About 35.
30, and Josh, our other officer, he has almost 50. So in comparison to municipal court, our numbers are lower. Municipal court deals with misdemeanor offenses, and we deal with the offenses, so there's a difference.
Question?
First off, I'd like to say I have great respect for the Freedom Center. I guess I've had some judges, do they ever have the offenders, like, have alcoholics anomalies to get off?
Everybody who comes to my court with a copy of the deal with the offenses, I order them to go to AA meetings. I order them to go get drug and alcohol, he says, at the Freedom Center. I order them to continue to stay in AA with the Freedom Center while they're on probation. And the Freedom Center is just a guy, drug dealing. I think we're all very lucky to have them. We have a lot of great people at the Freedom Center, they do a lot of good work down there.
My question is, when these hip programs are yet going on, earlier in the meeting, you said something about statistics. Real statistics of these programs are actually working. It seems like we keep seeing the same things over and over and over, being arrested. There might, something's not going on. Right. Do you have statistics?
Our drug court program's only a year old. We've had some failures, but we've had a lot of successes. I want to say I'm really proud of John and Anthony because of the recovery that they've been able to achieve, become, you know, working people, people who have all the same things, want all the same things we want, a house, a family, an income, not have the trouble hanging over their heads all the time. I don't know if drug court's going to work yet statistically, and I don't know what success is. You know, our goal is to make sure that people can get through it successfully and don't be offended. And we're going to keep trying, we're making it work. We're going to trial these different things until we find the right combination of programs and grants to get to be successful. But you're right. One of the reasons I started the drug court was, I've been doing this for 25 years, and I get tired of seeing the same names too. I used to see John and Anthony's case coming across my desk, and I started those Serio boys again, and I ended up picking up more cases. But that's stopped.
So in Franklin County, we're seeing traditional acts of prostitution decrease, and in its place, we're seeing the acts of prostitution and substitution for drugs. I'm interested in the cases that you hear, are we, which also leads to sex trafficking with young women. Are you guys seeing evidence of this in our county, when you're hearing these cases, of young women, young men trading acts to get access to drugs? Are we in that mode too there?
Somebody want to answer directly?
I think I can speak to that a little bit. We have seen evidence of trading sex for drugs. We've also seen, several years ago, we had a case where a drug dealer was keeping women high on drugs, put them up to weed, had them engage in acts of prostitution. It's, I think, we've got a helicopter in here. It is out there. It's going to have investigations where it's on radar, so the short answer is.
I have two funding questions. First part is, how often is there an opportunity to seek forfeiture of assets from drug dealers, and how can that be calculated? The second is, I think enough of us in our entire county over the last 10 years have been affected by drugs, that, you know, somebody in our family or whatever, that maybe we're ready to have more funding through the taxpayers, you know, with a proposal. I think we could get behind something.
I think we could get behind something if we sell the results.
Let me field the question that has to do with forfeiture of assets from drug dealers. Whenever we make a stop that involves drug trafficking and we have a drug trafficker who has cash in hand, those things are being subjected to forfeiture. The forfeiture laws have changed a little bit. There is a civil forfeiture that we can go after, which has become more difficult to do based on some legislative changes. But if there is a criminal conviction, we can forfeit proceeds of drug deals. And we can also forfeit instrumentality. So if someone is driving a vehicle that is being used to traffic drugs, those sorts of things can be forfeited. In the last 45 days, we've had some significant forfeitures approved by the common police court. We had a drug trafficker by the name of Sabian Chapman, who was set up on North Mulberry Street, was selling heroin and cocaine out of there. Mr. Chapman had about $2,400 on him when the place was raided by the SWAT team. That money was forfeited. That money is going to go to the mountain police department to help them with their drug enforcement efforts. We also had a case with a fellow by the name of Gary Gregg, who was a methamphetamine dealer who lived in Apple Valley. Mr. Gregg was pulled over in a vehicle with about two ounces of methamphetamine, which is a significant quantity. It's a second-degree felony-level charge. He's now in prison for three years. But in addition to that, we forfeited $16,000 in proceeds in cash that he had in his house. We also forfeited the vehicle that he used to drive the drugs to the scene. We've got a couple other significant forfeitures that are in the works right now. And we are using, we turn around, we use that money to fight the drug trafficking epidemic. I know the commissioners who are here and listening, Dave, and I know that the city is also looking at ways that they're going to have to find more resources for these programs. The commissioner shared some statistics with the other county elected officials, and the departments in the county, the prosecutor's office, the sheriff, the courts, have all seen significant increases in need for funding because of the fact that our case numbers are low. Last year, my felony caseload went to about 275. The prior year, it was at about 215. That's about a 20% to 30% increase in caseload. And right now, we're seeing the numbers staying at about the same level as last year. So, the increases are coming. You're right, there is going to be a need for more resources to keep up the caseload.
Question back here?
Yes, I'd like to know if there's a facility anywhere that could utilize that's comparable to the one sleeping.
Yes, because instead of having our own facility in this, we can send offenders to other community-based correctional facilities around the state. But, one thing that came out of our meetings with the Marysville Community-Based Correctional Facility was, they said that if they have openings, they will call us and let us know. And last week, we had... One? Last week, they called us and said, hey, we've got some victims with women. If you have any women who are eligible, send them over. So, we did. So, they had one of our women from our court, the adventure. So, we...
Before we go to additional questions, same everybody, just want to make sure that other people have had a chance to ask questions.
I was wondering, I'm an officer, I've been trying to help some of the people that have addictions. And I'm wondering if there's anything that can be done about, like the HIPAA laws or release form that's signed when they get into the trouble that the probation officer has access to be able to get, and for the families, because I feel like we're not safe. We're actually protecting the people that are susceptible to having to do diagnoses with an addiction and can't get any information. And also, my second thing was about that scanner page. I feel like that is, we have like a neighborhood watch of helping each other, all of us helping each other, watching out. How many times I've seen people in the alley or, you know, that they're not going to help themselves, and if we as a community cannot, you know, try to begin to gather, help each other, I feel like we're sort of being victims and not being told that we're in danger, like if they're on meth or something. And even the BPH, the probation officers, and all the people that I've talked to, well, HIPAA laws are better than being told on, that you know what they're on. So, I feel like, is there anything we can do to address that?
John and Andy are correct. We get submitted on supervision, well, actually during the pre-sent investigation portion of the proceedings, that they sign a release of information. Now, it's totally different between adults and juveniles. When they are an adult, even though they sign that release of information and the family member asks, you don't have to tell them, especially if that person, the offender, doesn't want anybody to know what's going on. I agree with you, the family members should know. That's why we try to incorporate the family into the equation of the supervision. As for the juveniles, that's a totally different study. So, I don't know about the scanner.
I know one of the issues as far as the HIPAA portion that is talked about in the Knox Substance Abuse Action Team, they have what they call a medical entry group that works with people who show up at the hospital and try to obtain services, and then what they call that handoff into other agencies. And I know that is a barrier that they're working through, and they're working on some solutions. And the hospital itself and some of their organizations have been pretty positive on trying to come up with either workarounds or release forms or ways that different groups and organizations that are there to assist can, you know, work with that or have that type of release form.
I guess I'll say as to releases and cases that I deal with, I always order that releases be signed, because I leave the information, casebookers leave the information, multitude of people leave the information. Sometimes we have a hard time having people sign those releases, but, yeah, I always order that those releases be signed, but, so that's how we try to do it as often as possible. I have to order them to be signed in juvenile cases, so...
Question back there?
I have a rental house, and I've had people, when I called the police on, that, like, knocked all the windows out, knocked the doors off, and really tear the place apart. I have a place now that may be one of the 24 houses that you've got an eye on for a drug house. And I have not seen anything on evidence that you showed on the screen at the beginning of these sections. I wonder, how does that affect, like, a landlord?
I have all the addictions in the county. Every landlord who wants to evict a tenant goes through my court, municipal court, okay? If you've got a tenant who is using your rental property for drugs as a drug house, you can evict that tenant, okay? That's a violation of your lease. So, you need to come to the municipal court with the eviction complaint form filled out, and you have eviction here, you can evict it, okay?
Question way over here?
So, I had a question about the scanner at the jail, just because of some of the situation that has occurred in Knox County over the last couple of years. Is it something that staff has to go through as well, not just inmates?
The staff does not go through, visitors do not go through. The Ohio Administrative Code has specific restrictions on who can be scanned, when they can be scanned, how they can be scanned. The actual scanner is certified by the Ohio Department of Health and the local health board, so they place certain restrictions, and it is on just inmates coming in.
Another question back there?
Sorry, David. I'd like to have John to talk a little bit about the, thinking for a change, how that is a big factor in your life. Get a microphone this time, okay?
Actually, thinking for a change is a... Thinking for a change is a hard step, but, you know, when you want something, you're ready for recovery. It's there. Your mentality is different, variety, bring it back.
Put it right up against your chin, or...
And it brings a mentality back. Your normalcy, is that correct? Yeah, I mean, you just, you don't think... You address yourself with problems and the needs of people, you're not selfish anymore. You think differently. I would have thought about being here tonight, I didn't take that course, but I did.
Do you think the future legalization of marijuana is going to cause more problems for police departments or less problems because only people over 21, usually medical reasons? Why is everyone smiling? No, I just, I just wonder if, because it's inevitable.
Yeah, that one's... I don't think it's inevitable. I think that it's important for you members of the community to be educated about the trajectory of drug use and what exactly is the gateway to drug. For anybody that was here last week, what's that statistic, Roger, about marijuana? I've experimented with today, 17 times?
17. It takes 17 and a half joints from 1970 to equal one joint of today.
Okay, so, today's marijuana...
Thirty-seven percent higher, stronger POC levels.
So, today's marijuana is much stronger than, you know, what it was in the 60s and the 70s. The second thing I'll say, and I'm going to shut up, because I'm a judge and have to be careful what I say about, you know, respective legislation. I think the legalization of marijuana is the worst idea since communism.
In addition to the medical marijuana, we're going to be having in the city of Mount Vernon a committee meeting on whether or not the city should allow medical marijuana dispensary, manufacturing facilities, grow facilities. And that'll be this Monday night at 6:15 in city council chambers. So, if any of you have views on that, you can come and share it with the city council. Thank you.
Actually, most people that know that I'm here know that I'm going to ask a question later, but I'd like to take that one with this gentleman said about the rental properties. I'm pretty close friends with a local landlord, and his concern is that when you have these properties that are being used as drug houses, the landlords aren't always getting the communication from law enforcement or the judges or whatever, it's a system, to how many times you all are being called out to these properties. I don't know if that applies to you as well, sir, or not. But the gentleman that I'm speaking of, he doesn't always get the notification that, hey, we've been out to your house for this, and noise complaints, and domestic violence, and drugs, and yet, you know, these houses are getting shut down, and they could be liable for this. So, is there any kind of communication in place between your side of the table and homeowner, the landlord's side, where they're getting these notifications that, hey, your tenants are causing problems in the community?
The answer is, there is no provision for us to notify landlords. Landlords are responsible for monitoring their own properties. They've chosen to get into that business, and that comes with, part of that is monitoring the properties that they're leasing to people. And I'm sorry, I don't think that the sheriff or the police chief, we have as many hours a day as necessary to notify every landlord that's, anytime we call out to their properties.
Would it not be beneficial, though, if there were some sort of communications that kind of, hey, if you've been called out since, I think, your rental six times, maybe it's time to put some back?
Let me follow up a little bit on what Rob had to say. My office last year, the year before, we sent out letters to landlords when their property was involved in a felony drug offense. And a number of those landlords screamed bloody murder to the paper about it and said that I was threatening them. At the end of the day, landlords, like Rob said, are responsible for what happens with their property. We can attempt to defy you, but at the end of the day, the landlords are the ones who are legally involved.
I was going to say, if the landlord has an idea that law enforcement is being called out, they can come up to us or police department, get copies of reports, come up and ask, say, in the last month, can you give me any reports you took at 123 Main Street? We're more than happy to give that. But most of the time, our patrol officers are there, they handle the call, and then they move on. They don't know the backstory of, okay, who actually... Yeah, they can get copies anytime.
I don't see any other hands up for questions, so definitely going to come back from the human. One more question.
Hello, also from one of your faces up there. I'm Katie, if ever known as Kate Dick from the scanner page. So, this necessarily isn't directly involved or related to the subject tonight, but I think the door was kind of open. It's what Paul says, that we need to work together, that the community needs to work with law enforcement, with the judicial system. So, there's some people that I'd like to maybe catch before you leave tonight to maybe talk directly to you, but just want to bring up the topic of encrypting the law enforcement radio traffic. I think it's detrimental to our community. I understand the need to keep our law enforcement official, you know, all of our law enforcement people safe. That is obviously all of our desire. We want to keep you safe, but you can keep us safe. But I think taking away the ability for us to help, it's cutting you off at the legs. I mean, we are able to not only help you by, hey, so-and-so is running down the street, running away from a police officer, well, I could long go that way. Not only that, but we're able to keep ourselves safe. If they're, perfect example, the Marengo bank robbery last week. How long did it take for your agency or the news to get that information out to the public? There was a potential armed robber in our area where kids are outside, it's a wonderful day outside, kids are outside playing. This gentleman could have run into someone's house, or a number of horrible things could have happened. And yet, how many hours passed that the community had no idea what's going on? If I could have one more minute, the tragedy in Dambel, tragedy in Dambel, when we lost our officer. How many people in our community were able to listen and hear where this horrible person was, where he was going from time to time, where he might have been? That we were able to secure our homes, secure our, you know, property because we had that information. You all were, had your hands full dealing with the situation. You couldn't get that information...
I'm an angel. I wasn't trying to crush on him.